We'll go ahead and call a meeting to order right at seven o'clock, please. Good evening and welcome to the West Covina City Council Chambers for the January 8th, 2013 meeting of the Planning Commission. Our flag salute tonight will be led by Commissioner Holtz, and we ask you to remain standing for a few moments to sound prayer. Thank you.
Please stand and repeat after me.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Commissioner Blackburn. Commissioner Holtz.
Here.
Commissioner Woods.
Here.
Commissioner Minifee.
Chairman Stewart.
Approval of the minutes of the last meeting. We have any corrections or changes, questions? If not, they're just...
Make a motion to approve.
All right. Most approved by Second Minister Minister. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Five zero. Okay, we'll move on to oral communications. This is a time when any member of the public may speak to the commission on any matter within the scope of duties assigned to the commission. Other matters included on this agenda may be addressed when that item is under consideration. For all oral communications, the chairperson may impose reasonable limitations on public comments to assure an orderly and timely meeting. The Ralph M. Brown Act limits the Planning Commission and staff's ability to respond to public comments at this meeting. Such your comments may be agendized for a future meeting or referred to staff. The commission may also ask questions for clarification if desired at this time. By policy of the commission, oral communication at this time on the agenda is limited to a total of 15 minutes. Persons who are not afforded the opportunity to speak at this time may do so under item E later on the agenda. I do not have any cards if anyone wishes to speak on something that's not agendized or on a hearing, why you may do so now and fill out a card later. Oh, I just got a card. He's on the, on one of the agendas. Anyone wish to speak on any other matters at all? All right. See you none. We'll go ahead and move on to consent calendar. We have a staff report, please.
Consent calendar just consists of forthcoming. We have no items currently scheduled for the next meeting on January 22nd, but we do have items on the first meeting in February, in February on the 12th.
May we motion to approve that?
Make the motion to approve.
Second by Commissioner Minifee. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Five zero. All right, we'll move on to public hearings. Initial use permit number 12-09, precise plan number 12-05, variance number 12-12, categorical exemption. The applicant is Mitchell First for Northwest College. The location is 2017, 2029, 2101, 2121, and 2149 West Garvey Avenue North. Their request is for approval of a conditional instrument to allow the continuing operation and expansion of a medical occupation school, Northwest College. The trade school is currently operating as four properties and is expanding onto the property at 2149 West Garvey Avenue North. The applicant is further requesting approval of a precise plan to remodel the buildings and properties. This project is categorically exempt under the California Environmental Quality Act in that it consists of minor alterations to the structures to modify the appearance and to operate the requested use, class one. We have a staff report, please.
Yes. The application is for rehabilitation work at Northwest College along West Covina Avenue North in the vicinity of Willow and Sunkist. The proposal requires a conditional use permit to allow professional business or trade school, a precise plan for cosmetic improvements to the buildings, revisions to the site layout, and a phasing plan, and a variance from certain development standards, which I'll get to in the report. North, the subject properties are located on the north side of the freeway. The site is adjacent to other commercial uses on the east and west and single-family houses to the north, which are separated by an alley. Northwest College has been operating at four of the sites for some time. Let's see if I can figure out how to use this. I don't think I have a laser pointer, but the furthest westerly most property, which is a triangular shaped property, is the one that has been recently purchased. The other four properties, which are encased in blue, are the properties that have been, that Northwest College has been operating with for some time. The five properties have three different zoning designations, which is kind of an oddity. They include planned industrial, neighborhood commercial, and service commercial. Northwest College provides professional vocational training for individuals in the medical field and is therefore defined as a trade school in the municipal code. The school's been operating for 46 years. It began operating 46 years ago. At the time it began operations, a conditional use permit was not necessary, so the business is currently operating as a legal non-conforming use. The trade school offers medical career training, including nursing, medical assisting, pharmacy technician, and medical insurance billing, as well as several other training courses. The conditional use permit will allow the trade school to utilize five different properties. The chart indicates the lot size of each property, building size, number of stories, and the uses, the types of uses that are in the, located in the rooms in each of the buildings. The applicant has indicated that Northwest College has 315 students. However, not all the students are on campus at one time. Some students attend morning classes, some afternoon classes, some evening classes, and others weekend classes. In terms of employees, the school staff can be divided into three categories. Corporate staff, because they do have other campuses around Southern California, so, and they have a corporate office here for all their campuses, so that's the first type, corporate staff. The second type is campus staff, which, how we categorize is sort of administrative. And third is faculty, which is the teachers. The applicant provided information on the time and days that staff members are present on campus. The time of day where the maximum number of students and employees are on campus is on weekday mornings, when there are 75 students and 42 staff members. Parking requirements are therefore 38 parking spaces for the students and 21 parking spaces for the employees, for a total of 59 spaces. The total number of parking spaces throughout the campus in all five lots is 170 spaces. The applicant has also submitted an application for a precise plan for building improvements, site improvements, and a phasing plan. The proposal includes cosmetic improvements to the front elevation of the buildings utilized by Northwest College. You can see those on the board here. No additions to the buildings are proposed. The proposed improvements are intended to provide consistent color palette, signage, and architectural design between the buildings and create a campus atmosphere. The applicant is proposing a phasing plan in three phases for the rehabilitation of the five properties. Site plans have been submitted for the first two properties in phase one. The applicant is proposing to complete similar improvements on the other three properties. Rather than have the applicant submit an additional precise plan in the future, conditions of approval have been included, requiring the submission of a planning director's modification for phase two and three, and that would be a staff level review to provide information on the improvements proposed for each of those properties. The site improvements for phase one, and this includes 2101 and 2121, I believe, the two properties you see here. This is Sunkist, and so this is 2101, and I believe 2121. It's kind of functioned as one, one property in some ways. The site plan improvements for phase one include resurfacing and restriping the parking lots, the addition of grasscrete or decorative paving, the installation of tables and chairs, secure bike storage, flagpoles, trash enclosures, planner boxes, and landscape areas. Parking standards for parking lots are established by the Planning Commission in the parking lot design standards. The standards include information on parking space size, backup space, lane width, and other standards that are part of the parking lot design. The applicant has submitted site plans for the properties that are part of phase one and has indicated a desire to preserve the parking layout that currently exists on the site. The parking space dimension and backup space in some of the areas are not consistent with the parking lot design standards. Because these standards are adopted by the Planning Commission, the commission has the authority to approve deviations from the standard, so it doesn't require a variance because it's not part of the code. Its standards are adopted by the Planning Commission, so they can be deviated from, by the approval of the Planning Commission. The applicant, the applicant is requesting that the Planning Commission allow the parking layouts to remain in their current configuration. They've indicated that the parking lots are functioning for them and that by conforming to the parking lot standards, there would be an overall reduction in the number of parking spaces. The proposal also includes a request from certain, a request for a variance from certain development standards. Most of the properties were developed in the 50s and the 60s, prior to the current development standards in the code. There are two standards that the applicant is requesting a variance for. That's a requirement for five feet of the front of the property to be landscaped and a 36-inch concrete wall, screen wall be provided outside, on the outside perimeter of all parking lots. The variants are necessary for the properties at 2017, 2029, and 2101, which is the three eastern lots. The other two lots are fully in compliance with the code. The proposal will allow for the rehabilitation of the Northwest College properties while not greatly changing the site layouts. The applicant has submitted the proposal to allow for the incorporation of the property at 2149 West Garvey Avenue North into the Northwest College campus. The approval of the conditional use permit will bring the trade school into conformity with the municipal code. Precise plan has been submitted to allow for the architectural improvements to the buildings and site plan improvements to the properties. The proposal includes a request to deviate from parking standards and to vary from development standards in the municipal code in terms of landscaping and the screen wall. This would be done to allow the site layouts of the three properties to remain in their current configurations. The resolutions have been prepared to allow the Planning Commission to approve the project as proposed. Staff is recommending approval. We did mail out notices to the surrounding properties and received no phone calls or responses from those. So that concludes my presentation. Be happy to respond to any questions.
Good. Thank you, Jeff. Any commission questions for staff at this time? All right, hearing none, we'll go ahead and open the public testimony. Would the applicant like to speak?
Mr. Lutz?
In the front. Just state your name, please.
Mr. Lutz. I'm the senior project manager. I'll approve the schedule. And if you can just answer any questions you may have regarding...
All right. Any questions for Mr. Lutz? I do have one. When you do the parking lots, you're going to slurry seal and re-stripe the parking lots?
No, we're going to remove all the existing asphalt because it's in pretty bad condition. We'll put in a four-inch layer of asphalt, so we do.
All right. My action, my question is, why don't you make the parking places the bigger size when you had the chance, as opposed to what a lot of them are right now? They're undersized.
Well, we just thought that the functionality of it, since it is functioning well now, we wouldn't make any changes on it. I know that sometimes the parking lot is overfilled, the parking is overfilled, it spills out into the street. If we were to make it to regular size, it could lose four to six parking spots, and we'd like to probably give that to the community as well as the school, not to do that.
Oh, you do have occasions when the lot is full.
Okay.
That's, that's 170 places, right?
Yes.
Okay. Answer my question. Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Anybody else have questions? See you none. Thank you. All right, we'll go ahead and, we do have some cards here. Herb Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, planning commissioners. To me, approval of this project is an over winner. This school has been operating in the city of West Covina since, I think, 1969.
66, and it has been a model citizen and a model business for all those years. And they obviously have already made a significant financial investment in the city, and now they're coming before you to expand on that. And to me, looking at the designs, it's a big improvement. It's going to be aesthetically pleasing to the hundreds of thousands of vehicles that travel the 10 freeway every day and see this project. Several years ago, when I sat on that side of the dais, they came forward and proposed something that we approved, and that is their signage, which was unique for us. It required a variance at that time. We approved it, and it is obviously well-maintained and, and kept up to date and is an asset to them and, I believe, to the city. And now they are coming forward and acquiring a building which apparently, if they hadn't, don't come forward and acquire it, it would be another potentially vacant building. So they're going to acquire that and remodel that and add that to their West Covina campus. So I think it deserves your approval, and I urge you to do so tonight as presented in the report. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reynolds. Mike Lee, are you for it or against it? For it? Okay, step forward.
Good evening. My name is Mike Lee. I am the CDC Director for the City of West Covina. And as far as the CDC, what we do is economic development and housing for the city. And at one time, we did have the redevelopment agency, but unfortunately, due to the state of limitation of redevelopment agency, we don't have that anymore. But the reason why I'm up here today is, over about, what, four to five years ago, we started having discussions with the Mitchell First of Northwest College about their improvements to their facility. And at that time, when we had redevelopment agency, we were talking about providing some financial assistance to them in order to do the rehab, the renovations they wanted to do. Because of what the state has done, we don't have redevelopment anymore, but they, as a company, have decided to continue and pursue to do the renovation on their own and spending their own money. They're going to invest over a million dollars of their own money to renovate their, their facility, which, which in today's times, you know, it's, it's not very common. And so the reason why I'm here today is I do want you to look at this and recommend support of this project, as this would continue a benefit to, to the city. Thank you.
Figuratively. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of the project? This gentleman go first here. State your name, please.
I guess I should speak in favor because I'm the applicant.
Right.
It'd be kind of weird if I was in opposition, don't you think?
Yeah.
But good evening, commissioners, Mr. Anderson. My name's Mitchell First, and it's our pleasure to present this project to you all. We're very excited about it. We've been working on it for a long time. It's a unique opportunity to give those buildings a campus-like feeling. As Jeff said in the staff report, as you well know, we've been here for many decades training students for all, for many careers in the medical field. So I'm available, of course, to answer any of your questions, and we're excited to get started. I just want to say that we appreciate Jeff's, you know, support of our, of our project. He's, he's a fantastic planning director. He's always been very patient and methodical, and he's, you know, a great supporter of business in the college, in the city, and we appreciate his support, as always. I also am happy that our new city manager is here with us tonight, and I think the council has made a wonderful choice in appointing Chris Chung as the city manager. We're very excited about it because he too has been a wonderful friend to business in the city of West Covina, and I think it's a wonderful appointment, so I'm super glad that he's here to, to join the commission meeting tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. First.
I have a question for you.
Mr. First, Commissioner Minifee.
Thank you. I'm pleased to see an educational expansion of your program. I'm interested in the degree of success that your, your students have. I know they're in the medical field. I know we're badly in need of people in that field, but if you could talk about that, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah. Well, Commissioner Minifee, it's a great question, and many times we're asked this. And as the staff report shared, this is our 47th year that we've been training medical people. And we, our institution is nationally accredited, which means that our outcomes for our students, both graduating our programs and getting placed in training-related occupations, are tracked. So Commissioner, you may be interested to know that at least 70%, which is the minimum requirement of the students that graduate, have to be placed in the medical field, and it's tracked. And so that's how we continue to stay vibrant as an institution. So many of our programs are placing even much higher than that. So for example, dental assisting, over 90% of our students that, that go in our dental program are going to work as dental assistants. And in our nursing program, it's about in the mid 80s. So we're very proud of those statistics. We have to provide these statistics on an ongoing annual basis to all of our regulators and in our sector of education. We have many regulators, and so we have to produce these types of outcomes year in and year out in our organization.
Joe, I understand you're saying that of your, of those who complete the program, only 80% are, are being placed?
Yeah, it depends on the program. I mean, sometimes it's, you know, at least 70%. Sometimes it's high as 95%. Depends on the program, right? There are many, there are other types of situations where students don't be, are not placed. Remember, if we have many, many hundreds of students, the overwhelming majority of them are going to work in the medical field, but sometimes students have other obstacles that prevent them from entering the world of work. You know, they could be wanting to go back to school. A lot of our medical assistants want to, you know, go on to our nursing program. Or, you know, we have many students who, you know, for one reason, you know, they, they're a mom and, and they can't, you know, get placed at that particular point in time, or they're active duty reserve, or there's many, many reasons why some of our students don't go to work. But again, at least 70% of our students are getting placed, and in most programs, it's much higher.
Thank you.
Sure. Commissioner Holtz?
I'm assuming you're saying that 70 or 80% are placed immediately. Is that what you're saying?
Right.
Okay. The rest could be placed at a later date or go into another field.
That's right.
So it's not like they're not pursuing that activity. It's just that those are the ones that are placed immediately, right?
That's correct, and it's interesting because, for example, I went to, to traditional college, as did many of you. And, you know, when I went to traditional college, I'm a graduate Cal Poly Pomona, right? You know, they just told you where the career center was, right? And so you graduated, and they said, "Well, there's the career center, and good luck." Well, that's not what we do. We prepare our students in many ways. We give them, give them not only the skills to get the job, but we give them the skills to keep the job. So we do mock interviewing and resume preparation and dressing for success, and we arrange for their interviews and with all of our contacts at our facilities and doctors that we've had relationships with for many decades. So we do all of these things as part of our student services, and that's what we've been doing over at the college for, for decades. In fact, you know, several of the council members have toured the college, and every time that we have people that come to tour the college, they're amazed with the number of labs that we have and, and how much equipment we have behind those walls and what we're doing. So we'd love to host you guys. Anytime you guys like to come over and take a tour, we'll give you the quarter tour. But for Commissioner Blackburn, it's a nickel, not, not a quarter.
Commissioner Blackburn.
On the five campuses you have throughout California and Nevada, I've, I've always been impressed with your operation. You have 150 students in the West Covina location. Out of the five campuses, how many students approximately attend your colleges?
Well, it depends, you know, I mean, we have seven campuses total, one being in Las Vegas, then six others in Southern California, from Riverside to Glendale. And so West Covina is about the average size. Riverside's our largest campus, and so, for example, we, we have just approaching 400 students in Riverside. So they average around that, that student population.
Great.
Yeah. And growing, which we're happy about. Other questions?
And we are too. Thank you.
I promise I'm growing, but the growing in the wrong way.
Right. Thank you, Mr. First. I think we're set here. Thank you very much.
My pleasure.
Mr. Kennedy, can I speak, please?
Good afternoon, or good evening, Glenn Kennedy. First of all, I'd like to say congratulations, Paul. I'm being pointed. I'd like to get back to this college. I have to agree with Herb, it's a no-brainer. Anybody who's going to expand in this economy, I tip my hands to them, and I, I like their color scheme. I think that's a nice soft color. Look, look nice. It'll actually, the aesthetics, like Herb said, you know, people driving up and down the freeway look nice because, so I think it's a go. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak for? Anyone wishing to speak against? All right. See you none. We'll go ahead and close the public discussion and open up the commissioner's discussion. Who would like to lead it off here? Anyone special? Commissioner Blackburn.
It's encouraging for me as a resident of West Covina to be able to see that the property owners, such as the Firsts, are basically upgrading and maintaining their properties. It's always nice to drive by the freeway and look at the properties and nice signs, and it's trying to upgrade and make all of the properties look like it's part of the same campus, I think is great. Unfortunate that all the owners of properties in West Covina aren't able to do that, so compliments to you, and I agree with everything that has been said tonight, and especially with the proposal from the planning department, so I would definitely support it.
Thank you. Commissioner Holtz?
Yeah, I for one are very glad that you're in our city and have chosen our city and chose to stay here and expand, and I've been very impressed over the years how you've constantly improved on the facility, and it's really a showplace. And by expanding now, you're making room for more students, which means more jobs, which helps the economy, and I think it's just a win-win situation, and I'm definitely in favor of the project.
Commissioner Minifee?
Yeah, I am a retired educator. I understand the issues that we were talking about here, and I appreciate your responses to them. I love your property. I was over there the other day checking it out. I remember when there were some other buildings there in its place. It looks like a good cohesive plan is coming together that will expand the opportunities for people, both faculty people and students, and I think that's a wonderful opportunity for this city. Congratulations. Thank you.
Good, thank you. Commissioner Wood, do you like to speak on it? He'll sit.
Well, I'm, I'm surprised that, the way the property looks, that we are, you are successful as you have been. I believe that when this is all finished, all the new renovations and, and people will become more aware of it, and I think, I have, I think it's going to be, your money will be well spent. And I'm personally, I'm in, I was by there today and yesterday, and I, and with this new, new, new changes you're making on the buildings, it's, it's going to be a really a nice area. I support it 100%.
Good, thank you. I agree with my fellow commissioners. This is a situation where if you're in West Covina, you know that it belongs, it's all Northwest College, but by doing this, going down the freeway, there's not going to be no signals. It's going to look exactly the same, and it's going to, it's going to look terrific. So I'm looking forward to, hopefully, maybe you'll have it done before 2017. Anyway, I'll close the commission discussion and ask for the resolution numbers on the conditional use permit, precise plan, and the variance number.
The conditional use permit will be 13-5498. The precise plan will be 13-5499, and the variance will be 13-5500.
All right, can we have approval of the conferences? I mean, of the resolutions, please? Somebody make a second? Motion?
Second.
A motion is by Commissioner Holtz and a second by Commissioner Blackburn. A roll call, please. Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes.
Commissioner Holtz?
Aye.
Commissioner Woods?
Aye.
Commissioner Minifee?
Aye.
Chairman Stewart?
Aye.
These actions are final, and that's appealed to the city council within 10 days. Thank you very much. All right, we'll move on to non-hearing items. Number four, AIPP 12-01. The applicant is Andrew McIntyre. The location is 220 South Citrus Street, McIntyre Square. You have a report, please?
The proposal here is the installation of a large bronze... The proposal here is the installation of a large bronze sculpture in front of McIntyre Square Shopping Center. The art allocation for this project is fifty-eight thousand dollars, fifty-eight thousand thirty dollars and ninety-six cents, which is one percent of the building valuation of the construction that's occurred there over the last few years of McIntyre Square. If we could have the lights turned down, probably be easier to see them. This is the schematic stage review for the planning commission. As indicated in the art in public places, guidelines of schematic stage allows the planning commission to review the conceptual design of proposed artwork prior to the final submittal. During this review, the commission can consider artwork details, including the type and style of artwork, placement of artwork, materials, size of artwork, color, texture and texture of the piece. The art budget can also be considered. At the conclusion of the review, the planning commission will determine if the change, if changes are needed prior to final submittal. The proposal was organized by a project team comprised of two members of the McIntyre Company, their landscape architect and civil engineer. They reviewed fifteen different artist credentials and selected an artist by the name of David Spellerberg and selected a piece called "A Day to Remember" and we do have background information on Mr. Spellerberg, which was included in the, in the packets of the planning commission received. The applicant is proposing to install the artwork at McIntyre Square in a triangular landscape planner that's sort of in between eighty-five degree bakery and the Garvey South and you can sort of see that from the, this photo simulation, they're not out there, this is a photo simulation and you can see that the building behind, while it doesn't have a name on it, the time when the picture was taken, this is eighty-five degree, it's now there. And from the onset, when they were working on this redevelopment of this site, they had picked that location for the artwork. They picked the location before they determined what kind of artwork they'd like to, like to proceed with. The bronze sculpture is two life-size horses mounted on a base with the addition of two children seated atop one of the horses. The one horse is seven and a half feet tall and the other horse is six feet tall. Also providing some information on how, sort of how the sculpture is created to make sure that it stays in place there. Location is very visible from West Covina Avenue South and other neighboring properties and maybe somewhat visible from, from the freeway. The total cost for the artwork is sixty-eight thousand five hundred dollars. There are probably some other costs that are associated with it, we'll probably get more information of at the final review, including the installation cost, the base, the landscaping and the lighting. The schematic, again, by way of conclusion, the schematic review phase allows the commission to review artwork prior to the completion of the design. The sculpture is a, is by a recognized artist. The proposal locate, the proposed location is visible from Garvey Avenue and they did select this because it was in remembrance of when the property was a horse property sometime in the past. So that was their, that's their reason for selecting the horses. That concludes staff reports. If there's any questions, we'd be happy to answer them. We do have the applicant here that, if you have any questions for them.
Any questions? Staff at this time?
It has to do with the proposal, but perhaps you could answer it for me, just to make sure I understand, because one of the horses appears to be larger than the other. Page twenty-two of the proposal says, "The standing horse on the right is approximately seven and a half feet tall. The horse on the right is approximately six foot tall." I presume that is just a typo.
Yeah, I presume that's true.
The standing horse on the left, I think, is that what we read, is seven and a half foot tall?
You probably should confirm that with the applicant, but I believe that to be the case, yeah. At least from the angle, we're looking at it in this, this photo simulation, the horse on the left is clearly taller than the horse on the right.
Thank you. The applicant like to step forward, please?
Good evening, gentlemen. Andy McIntyre with the McIntyre Company. So in picking this piece of artwork, we battled a lot of ideas. We were thinking maybe patriotic, maybe do a nine eleven for the west coast. We first wanted to have something to be when people see West Covina and they get off and also we look at it as Covina too, the general area. We wanted them to be hit with something that's like, wow, what, like, wow, that's really classy and nice so they, they know this is a, a nice city. So we bounced a lot of ideas. We didn't want it to be tacky, possibly, I don't mean to despair, disparage Elmani, but like the mini Statue of Liberty type of deal that they have over there. So at first, you know, some ideas sound good and we're bouncing back and forth, but we finally settled on the horses just because somebody came to our office when we first bought the property and dropped off an old VHS tape of somebody that had created out of some other old footage of a pony ranch that was right there. So we thought, hey, horses are majestic, they're classy, it looks nice, got the Ridge Riders right behind it, might be perfect for our site. Also, we really have a theme that we like to try to incorporate on all of our properties, which is children running around the community, safe, a good place to raise a family. So we thought the two themes together would be perfect for the site and we picked the location because again, it's right in front and it's what everybody's going to see when they come to town. So that's a little the history behind what we chose and the overall, the cost is probably going to be closer to about eighty thousand by the time we're all done. One thing that we couldn't really incorporate in the photo is instead of putting them on grass, we wanted to have a concrete podium that they go into so that they're more secure and dealing with bronze statues, we also learned, we got to pick a bronze statue that's big enough to where nobody can walk off with it or pull it, pull it with a truck. You learn that the hard way, but these suckers are coming in on a, on a flatbed truck that gets set with a crane. They're going to have stainless steel solid that go into the concrete that we're going to fix with epoxy. So hopefully if somebody comes along and tries to take one of these, these things, it's going to take so long that somebody will spot and say, "Hey, what's going on here?" But we'll see. In the meantime, we were going to think about putting them in concrete and then wrapping it with some of the same brick so it's not just, you know, it's nice, looks real nice when it sits there. But yeah, that's generally it. If you have any questions, I brought the artist too. I just wanted to give him, let him give you a little bio on what he's done. He's really the man when it comes to bronze work in America, so.
Any other questions? Commissioner Holtz?
Do you have any idea what the completion date would be if you go?
I think like, what do you think, four months, David? Six months?
I would say four to six months, probably closer to about four and a half months.
I'll get the base ready. We'll probably get the base ready and then he'll come out and set the thing. So yeah, but maybe August, hopefully. It's all up on him.
All right.
How fast he wants it, buddy. Cool.
Any other questions for the applicant?
I have one, Andy. I always think of things, I love that setup there. Are you worried about all about people putting their kids on top of the horse with no rider and taking pictures?
They can't, again, we're going to put it on concrete, the podium. I was thinking, you know, to play it, to have it be like maybe three and a half feet so you can't sit on it and it's not as easy to put your foot up on it and climb up on it. If there are going to be people that try to take photos on it, you know, crazy people. I hope not. We have security in there from five o'clock at night till five in the morning and then our crew comes in around six, so we'll try to keep people off of it.
Yeah, I could say, I love the whole project. I just, I had just thought of that because you got two riders on the other one, it's all, you know.
And we're going to play the lights also, because we want that at night when people are coming east to just be like, whoa, what is that?
Yeah.
Showstopper.
Showstopper, for sure. The lights are going to be in the ground shining upward.
Yeah, we're thinking about putting them in the concrete base and then we'll be able to angle them at the, because we got to light the flag twenty-four seven and also we want the thing lit up properly and don't want to spend all that money and not have it be seen at night.
That's right, you're right. Okay. Thank you, Andy. Thank you very much. I have, would the artist like to, I have one other card. Would the artist like to speak now?
Thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to talk tonight. I've had the privilege of working with Andy and his family in the past and I've had a privilege of working with a lot of other people all over Southern California on different projects and so on, but they, of all the people I've worked with, are as particular and detail oriented and really want to do something special. And the other things that I've done with them in the past, they, they left no stone unturned and they asked lots of questions and, and I like working with people like that because I know exactly what they want and I can have a better chance of pleasing them and the public by knowing from the very beginning what, what their guidelines are and so on. This particular piece, I think, will be exciting because the horses are very dramatic and I think having the two children on the back of the one, the one horse with the flag in their hand, maybe will bring back some memories of the days in the past when they used to have parades and people would go up the street and so on on their horses and kids would be excited and it would get a lot of enthusiasm and it certainly is a, a family-oriented type of project. It also, I think, will be visible from the freeway because the horses are big. The mare that's on the right is about eleven feet long and the, the horse on the left is about nine feet long and from, from the freeway, you'll definitely be able to see them, especially they have the lights on them and so on at night. So I'm very excited to be involved with this. We've had the privilege of doing some other projects in Southern California. We did a big statue of Gene Autry over at the Gene Autry Museum many years ago. It was unveiled in nineteen eighty-five and we worked with Dr. Schuler and did some very beautiful sculptures of Jesus and some religious figures for the Crystal Cathedral years ago. Did a big Orange County Fire Authority sculpture in honoring all the firefighters of all of Orange County. So Southern California's been our, our main base of operation and I think we have right now somewhere maybe around twenty-eight or thirty outdoor large sculptures that are in parks and churches and museums and all over the, the Southern California communities. But thank you very much and we look forward to working with you and also working with the McIntyre Company. Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Spellerberg? Seeing none? Thank you, sir. I do have a card from Mike Lee.
Hi, Mike Lee. In the development world, there's two types of developer. One is the developer that just does the bare minimum and try to get by and one that goes on and do above and beyond. The McIntyre Company, which I have known for the past fourteen years, they're the type of the latter. Just looking at the detail of their shopping center, the recently remodeled shopping center, they spared no expense. The detail of the building, the, just the streetlights, they could have gone with something much cheaper, it was for something much, much better. The landscaping and all the amount of work and effort they put in the shopping center has been tremendous and it goes along with the art that they're putting in as well. And similar to Northwest College earlier, they're investing money in this economy. McIntyre's doing the same thing, they're creating jobs, creating opportunities, investing their own money into the shopping center, into their community. Recently, they just opened the eighty-five degree Celsius, some of the members of the commission were, were present and they have other tenants coming down the pipeline. So I do urge you to support the project tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike Lee. Anyone else wish to speak, either for or against? Mr. Rittles?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening once again. Yeah, this, to me, this selection of this artwork, these horses, is absolutely perfect for this location. It pays tribute to the history of this land and it pays tribute and is perfect because of its proximity to the Ridge Riders. It, it absolutely encompasses that. And again, this, this, the intent of this project was to be a showplace, retail showplace for West Covina and it is now becoming that. And with the addition of the new tenants and more tenants coming in, this artwork will really be the, the cap, the capper for the, the, the beauty of it all. And again, as Mike Lee just said, you know, the McIntyre Company has, they don't build, cut and run. You know, they build, they manage, they nurture, they're there every day to make sure that it is up to their high standards and this center is no exception and I think we deserve to go forward with this project, with this artwork as presented and I hope you do that and we're looking forward to this center being a success for many years to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rittles. Anyone else wishing to speak, for or against? All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public testimony and take it to the commission discussion, please. Any comments from the commission?
I have a comment.
Commissioner Blackburn?
It's a, it's a, exciting to see the McIntyre, excuse me, McIntyre Company getting involved with, with the shopping center, what they did with it. I've lived in the same house for nearly thirty-six years, just on the street and I've seen lots of changes. It's exciting also to see not only what the McIntyre Company does throughout its properties, I think that the bronze statues throughout Covina and West Covina are absolutely spectacular. I think that the, the horses, I think was an absolute great decision as far as the theme to go with, speaking about the Ridge Riders. I just think it's a great project. I hope we find other projects in West Covina to do.
Thank you. Anyone else? Commissioner Minifee?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I think as one of the prior arts commissioners of this city, as Donald Woods and I were, we can appreciate the process that you've gone through and the time and the effort to find that exact thing that excites you and that you believe will excite the community and I applaud you for your efforts.
Thank you. Anyone else? Commissioner Holtz?
Yeah, first of all, excuse me, I'd like to congratulate Andy on the, on the actual center there. It's just gone beyond my expectations, what you've done there and it constantly is improving and this is going to be great. I think it's a, a super pick to put the horses there, again, close to the proximity of Ridge Riders and it will be a showplace off the freeway and I know our mayor is going to be very pleased at their horses. She might be a little disappointed though, they didn't cast her in bronze on top of one of them. I'm sure she'll overlook that, but no, I think it's going to be a great, a great project and it's going to be a great piece there. So I'm definitely in, looking forward to it. Thank you.
Mr. Stewart, you want to say something?
You know, I have to, to say, Andy McIntyre, you accomplished a goal and your goal and beyond. You have created one of the greatest shopping centers, I think, around us and the sculptures are, are fantastic and I, and I think that it's going to be attracting a lot of, a lot of people. One thing I like about it is that I know where to go get my flowers now if I need some, some beautiful flowers throughout that whole shopping center. So thanks again, Andy. Great job.
Thank you, Commissioner. I agree with all the commissioners. This, this project has been, from day one, it's, everything done has been over the top and this is just another, another item that they've done that's so beautiful and I'm sure there's more to come before the center's complete, but you know, being a fifty-five year resident of the city, I can remember horses, I can remember orange groves and you've got both of them down there. So anyway, I definitely approve it and I commend the artists for a fantastic job on, on doing what, what we have here. So I think with that, we have to, we need an approval by a vote.
Yeah, it should be.
Individual or just a motion? Motion's okay?
Just a motion and a vote.
Mr. Chairman, I would move approval of this project.
All right, do I have a second? Second, Commissioner Woods. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? carries five zero. We're looking forward to seeing you about four and a half months.
The final, the final design will be brought back to the planning commission as soon as they, they're able to put it all together.
Right, okay. Thank you very much. All right, we'll move on to item number five, which is a study session on pylon sign code amendment initiation. Can we have a staff report on that, please?
It won't go off, you just have to look at it.
It's nice to look at.
Yeah, it's not a bad thing to look at. Oh, I did want to, before I start this, I did want to pass out a replacement attachment three because we noted that there was a couple typos on that one. The planning commission in October two thousand and twelve, the planning commission had discussed review of variance applications. Getting a lot of feedback tonight. Still getting feedback. Can, do you mind turning off the, the dive? That didn't work either. Can you hear me still?
Yeah.
Okay, let's try that. All right. On October twenty-third, two thousand and twelve, the planning commission reviewed variance applications that have been submitted over the last five years or so and after looking at the different variances that have been submitted. that have been submitted, they directed staff to agendize consideration of a code amendment to review the standards for pylon signs in the municipal code. Municipal code established the standards for three types of detached signs. Signs for single-tenant buildings, signs for multi-tenant buildings, basically shopping centers for the most part, and then for special uses, things like service stations and auto The standards include standards for monument signs, which are freestanding signs that are less than eight feet in tall, eight feet tall, pylon sign, and pylon signs, which are freestanding signs that are more than eight feet tall. So I put that in there just so you understand when we use the term pylon signs, what we're talking about is something that's more than eight foot tall. Generally, the term has been come up, and there's a lot of different terms for tall signs. Another term that we use often is freestanding signs. Pylon signs are what the code calls them because the code calls for pylons, so two pylons holding up a sign rather than a monolith or a single pole. So that's what the sign code encourages and that's why the name is what, why we call it, what we do. I did provide you on attachment two, some of the information of what's allowed in the municipal code for the different, the three different types of signs that I just mentioned. It is a graduated scale, so the larger the center, the larger the building, the taller the sign, the larger the sign that you can have. Staff researched the submitted variance applications between 2007 and present to provide information on the types of variances submitted for pylon signs. I prepared a chart and that's attachment three, which I just replaced. It provides information on the location of the request for variance, the proposed signage, and the allowed signage. I think all the ones that I provided you were approved. I didn't, I tried to put that together pretty quickly, so I wanted to get you good information, but it isn't as, it isn't as much information as we would like to provide when we have a study session to actually consider, but it sort of just gives you sort of an outline of what, how things have gone over the past few years. The zoning code states that code amendments are initiated by resolution of the city council or by resolution of the planning commission. We have included a resolution to allow you to initiate a code amendment tonight if you so choose. If you do choose to initiate, staff will evaluate the height square footage as well as the locations of the signs, freeway, near freeways, principal materials, single-use buildings, multiple use or multiple-tenant buildings, and schedule a study session. So I have, we haven't done a lot of analysis of this yet to provide you any information on where we think, I shouldn't say where we think, but the options that would be available to you. We would generally do that after you've initiated a resolution to initiate. So that's kind of where we're at right now. Code amendments do require a public hearing before the planning commission as well as before the city council, so anything that would be initiated here would have to be followed up with study sessions and a public hearing and then forward to the council and they would have to make the final decision whether or not it changed the code or not. So staff is, has provided you the information. If you think it's appropriate to initiate, you can adopt the resolution that's attached as attachment number one. That concludes staff's presentation.
Any questions, staff, this time?
On the pylons, Jeff, do they, I know on the height, it's usually steel, do they have, do those usually poured in place or could be fiberglass filled with some sort of a concrete or shock feed or something?
Those are good questions. I'm not sure I have the information. My gut feeling is a lot of them are poured in place. They're usually, they're usually on a base and usually a monolith. They usually aren't lifted up because they want to use the whole area for signage, so it's usually just a couple feet off the ground. So that's my understanding, but I don't, I don't think I can answer any better than that.
Probably the higher the sign, definitely over 10, 15 feet, probably steel construction.
That would be my assumption too, and definitely a lot, you know, a lot more concrete under the ground too for the footings.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes, a question or a comment, because I know we're just starting a process. It seems to me that insofar as we're looking at a period of time when we had a lot of actions before us and trying to determine how the code might be changed to support the actions that are needed instead of having to bring each one of them to the planning commission, that maybe we don't have to set the standard, my feeling. And 100% of all of those things have been suggested, but maybe 75 or 80%. I don't know how that fits into this thought process you guys will go through, but I wanted to suggest that I would certainly be satisfied if we could meet 75 or 80% of those and not have to reach all the way up to include everything we've ever looked at.
I think that our, at least our conceptual idea, my conceptual idea is very similar to what you're, I hadn't thought of that in terms of percentage, but I think in general I agree with that comment. I think there, there's a wide range of things that have been approved and some of them, some of variance requests are only for a few feet, they're just a little bit off, maybe five or 10% off, and other ones are 700% off. So you know, I don't, I agree with, I'm not sure we want to approve, write, approve everything. I guess there's two things about, about this that I would say. One is that if, and I think I've commented this before, if, if you're approving variances over and over, it's a good time to look back at the code to determine if the code is really written the way that the city wants to approve things. So that's one, one thought. Actually, there's three. The second thing is, you know, while this will take staff some time to prepare, in the long run, it may be better for staff because now we won't have 15 variances over a five-year period, we may end up with four variances or something. And so that reduces the amount of staff time, staff has to look at each one of those variances. And thirdly, and maybe most importantly, the development community isn't, would generally prefer not to have to go through a variance process. It's a very, it's a big question mark how it's going to go. From one city to the next, you know, this city might approve a variance, they might go to the next door neighbor and they might deny it. And so it's, it's a real, they don't like them. If they can get something that's more solid and they can follow it, they're going to prefer that. So it would be helpful to the development community if you had better standards that they could follow and they didn't have to apply for variance. There may be processes that we can put in, we might necessarily have to allow everything by right, there may be a process or that requires review and notification or something, but it's not a variance. So that's kind of my thought process, this, and I haven't really gotten to anything from it in my mind, options at this point, but, but I think I generally agree with your statement.
Commissioner Holtz?
Yeah, first of all, I want to thank Commissioner Minifee for bringing us to our attention some months back because it seemed like every time there was a sign going up, we had a variance. And you know, times have changed since the original document was put together. And I think now that we're, the city's getting more congested and more congested and businesses need to be recognized where they're at, there's going to have to be more high signages. For an example, one that's really high is at McDonald's on Garvey Avenue, but without that sign there, people don't know that they're there. So I think coming, bringing this together, it'll eliminate, I think, more staff time or I should, it should eliminate staff time and bring this more into light of where we are today. We're still going to have some variances, there's no doubt about it. Yeah, but I think this will eliminate a lot of the variances that we have to go through. So I think this is a darn good start. And looking at the attachment three that you gave us, every one of those, you know, is a variance of quite a bit, you know, from six feet to 45 feet, six feet, 25 feet, 35, 40, 630, you know, it's not just a small percentage, it's a lot. So I think this is a good start and I'd be willing to go along with this and, especially if it eliminates staff time and brings us more into alignment with what we need to have today in the city. That's my feeling.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I do have one, Jeff. Our maximum right now is 45 feet, right, on the freeway?
That is correct, 45 feet.
My feeling is if we were to raise that up to 60 feet, only because square footage of the building would determine if they got 60 feet or not, because you're not going to put a 60-foot on a small building. But probably 60 feet in the code would save a lot of problem if it was on the freeway or as they say like at Amar, as those are big intersections, you know? If they had a big shopping center or something, but that would probably go a long ways as, you know, knocking off the variances in a lot of cases. Because from my experience here, a lot of these things are, you know, you do it by, kind of by ear because of the circumstances of the building or where it's at, or the guy next door's got one that's at it, it's hard to say yes or no, you know? How big is a Nissan sign? You recall it?
Now, was that before, that didn't make the list?
It's probably 60 feet, right?
I don't recall it all.
Anyway, but that's what.
I guess it's 45 to 60.
That's kind of my thought, to take the freeway part of it up and I think that might solve a lot of problems for us. The other ones are kind of played by ear and, you know, case by case. So with that, if you think that's appropriate, we'll go ahead and.
Yeah, we didn't, we don't have it on here, but if you want us to go forward, then you, we'd need to, I'd need to read a resolution number, you'd have to vote on a resolution to initiate.
Okay. Resolution?
The resolution number would be 13-5501.
All right.
So moved.
All right, do we have a second to that?
I'll second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes.
Commissioner Holtz?
Yes.
Commissioner Woods?
Here.
Yes.
Commissioner Minifee?
Yes.
Chairman Stewart?
Aye. So it carries five zero, so you'll bring it back after, whenever.
Well, if you notice, I have it on the, as long as you guys approve it, I have it on the first meeting in February. I'm going to try the hardest, I'd like to kind of move this along because it's kind of single focus and it, I should be able to come up with some alternatives depending on other things that might come up. But that's my goal, is to try to get it back on the first, in the February 12th meeting.
All right.
Have a study session.
Very good, thank you. All right, we'll have, anybody from oral communications, two ladies like to speak?
I know your name, but state your name, please.
I'm the attorney.
All right.
And I've lived in West Covina since 1956. But I was very active while I worked for the Hacienda de la Puente School District for 28 years, and then I became a property manager in Long Beach. So I wasn't very active here in West Covina until about 15 years ago. And I would come to the planning commission and the city council, and there was this wonderful woman that would appear here, and her name was Joanne Willner. And when she came to speak, you knew that she had done her homework and she was a very positive person. We lost her. She passed away on December 17th, very unexpectedly, but I'm hoping that you will adjourn your meeting tonight in memory of Joanne. Thank you.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else hiring you, wish to speak, say that? No? All right, thank you. All right, we'll go on to commission reports and comments. Anyone have any thing they'd like to say before we? Commissioner Blackburn, you got something?
Just quickly, it's exciting. It's exciting for me as a resident of West Covina to see the, not only the college, but the McIntyre Company, what they're doing, and I'm just glad to be part of the commission that can help make the decisions that will move forward with the improvements. I'd like to thank staff for the help that they've given me as a new commissioner, so I appreciate that, Jeff.
Very good, thank you. Anyone else have any comments? All right, we'll go ahead and go on to the planning director's report.
We have the subcommittee minutes from December 11th on there.
Okay, and city council elections?
On the, next Tuesday night, on the 15th, the Valinda Residential Project that was reviewed here on December 11th. Did I say December? January 15th, it's going to be next week, on January 15th. They're going to, the planning, the city council will be reviewing the, that project.
All right, thank you.
We'll go ahead and close the meeting. Surely, I was going to close the meeting, I had an honor of Joanne. I've only known her for about eight years and it actually was a time that, that I've been on commissions here and she's been coming in, but every time she'd come, I listened and I learned because just like you said, she did her homework and she had some very positive things to say. It was very, I was very surprised to hear, and it's unfortunate, the city was closed during the time and I really didn't get back to me until a day, day of her, or in her funeral, but they had a reception for her at the house. Anyway, I'd like to close the meeting in memory of Mrs. Willner. And we'll go ahead and get a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Holtz. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.